We call this meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting in Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, September 8th. And Dr. Richardson, there were a few items in our table file.
Yes, you have a number of personnel items. You have appointments. You have increased, decreased, change in assignments, resignation. You also have a TRA part-time teacher program component that you'll need to approve. And also, based on your memo, chair a SuperNet's contract provisions for 2014-15 for year two of the three-year contract.
There's no objection. We will add these to the agenda as we move forward. All right. Ready to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to adjust the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to adjust the board? All right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting, which were held on August 25th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So by Noel, seconded by Julie. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any discussions? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, and I do have a couple of this evening. First of all, I would just like to recognize Community Services Division. They were awarded a $35,000 grant by the Minnesota Department of Education for the Pathway to Early Learning Scholarships. This was the maximum dollar amount that could be allocated to a school district. And the early learning scholarship dollars will be used to support adding a three-day-per-week preschool class with a capacity for 10 scholarship students to attend, to provide transportation for preschool and parent education events, to provide one parent education and/or family event each month from September through June, to purchase evidence-based curriculum for early ventures childcare program, continue to provide wraparound care spots for preschool students as requested, to provide additional support and assistance for Bridges Decay, and also to increase collaboration between early childhood teachers and kindergarten staff. So, the fact that we are a four-star rated program gave us access into this, but we still had to apply and be selected. And this again gives us additional dollars to help support that early childhood component and also to begin to make even stronger connections to kindergarten. We also would like to congratulate Greenville Park. The Midwest Dairy Council's awarded Greenville Park a $4,000 grant for Fuel Up to Place 60. The funds will be divided between healthy eating and physical activity programs, and $2,000 will be used to provide a grab-and-go any-time kiosk, and $2,000 will be used to purchase large and small fitness equipment for the gym and playground. So, this is not their first of these grants. They have pursued these pretty vigorously over the last several years and have been awarded several of these. So this is a really good opportunity for them to expand options for their kids with that program.
Other announcements and recognition? All right. Very good. We are ready to move on to our first item, which is Kim presenting us the Technology Transformation Update.
Good evening. First of all, I just want to do the formal introduction. I did have the brief introduction here, you know, a month or so ago maybe. But I am Kim Brisky, and I'm really, really happy to be here, working in the Northfield Schools. We do live in Northfield, my husband and my two kids and I, and we've been here for quite some time. Bought our first place here in 2005, and even before that, my dad, my dad probably moved here, I think in '88 or '89 as a pastor at Little Prairie. And so, we've been in the community for quite a while, and I, by work, I come my way of Farmington, or I was for nine years as a high school Spanish teacher, and then as a technology integration specialist, working K-12 with mostly teachers, and how to integrate technology into their instruction, which was a perfect segue into this role. So, I'm feeling pretty good about the start and happy to be in school now, having teachers and kids here, because that's where it becomes real and relevant and purposeful. So, what I've prepared for you tonight is basically a snippet of what I presented to all of our secondary teachers during workshop week. And I think, I think these two saw the long version, and this is going to be the short, the short version. But in true teacher fashion, what happened is I presented this on Tuesday morning of workshop to the high school staff, and on Monday night, I decided I wanted to change basically everything, and redid the entire presentation, starting at about 9:30 PM, because I had a new idea of what I wanted to share, and it's kind of some combinations of things that I've presented in other venues. And the change, or the title, Be the Change, was the last piece that I put in, and that was, you know, I was thinking about the themes of this, and I think we're in some big times of change in education, which I'm going to talk a little bit about. But I love that quote from Gandhi about be the change you wish to see in the world, and I think that as teachers, actually, I know as teachers and as school professionals, that we have the ability to guide the change that we are experiencing. So, as an encouragement to those of us working with kids. So, like I say, we're in times of change, and I think in times of opportunity, and I'm going to reference The Tipping Point by Malcolm Gladwell here, and he talks about, you know, big scale change, little moves and little changes in our actions that have really big effects. And he calls them tipping points. And here's one of the quotes from the book. It says, "Look at the world around you. It may seem like an immovable, implacable place. It is not. With just the slightest push, in just the right place, it can be tipped." And that's where I would say we're at with education, because you look back and you see that the past, we go through all sorts of changes in schools, and our teachers will tell you, yep, we've been there, we've done that, we've tried this, we've tried that, here it is again with a new name. And all of these changes, some of them are trends, but they, we've had positive learning from them. It's not just things that we're trying, they're not random by any means. They're things that we're doing in order to improve the learning experience for our students, and by that, we learn and we improve our practice. So our professional practice over time with all of these changes has gotten better. However, I will say that I think most of those changes have left us doing mostly the same things since school, since public education came about. Kids come into the school, they go through their day, they sit in their seats, maybe work with groups, get some activities, go on to the next class, maybe do some things at home, come back again the next day and repeat it. And I think, moving forward, we have some really good opportunities to change some of the real structural elements to what we're doing for teaching and learning. And so, here's the game changers I see, that we have the availability of devices. We're really lucky. We have kids who everybody has access to a powerful learning tool. Teachers can assign something, teachers can be creative with what they're doing and how they're presenting content, knowing that it's not just for those kids who have a computer at home or have the resources to get an iPad or whatever it might be, but every kid has it. It's a classroom of haves, nots and haves and have-nots. Internet access is basically ubiquitous. You walk anywhere downtown and you can choose from eight wireless networks that you can join. Most people have it in their homes, we have it in our schools, we have it at the public library. You can find internet access. Content creation. Teachers have more ability now to create their own content for their classrooms, just because of the availability of resources to them, you know, at their fingertips through the web, basically. And not only that, you know, we're not beholden to publishers creating a curriculum that we purchase and follow, and them determining what it is our students need to learn, but teachers being able to really curate and provide, these are the things I want my students to know and be able to do. I'm going to pick the right resources and provide them to my students. And then also creating on the web. Web content creation used to be reserved for really an elite few, people who had training and coding and things like that. And now I'm going to guess that most of us in this room have contributed something to an online community today, and that other people see. And so, we all have this ability to interact on the web and to create something that is seen by others. Teacher skills, teachers have always needed a lot of skill, not just their content, they're teaching something, but it's an art, and it requires a lot of practice. And teacher learning and teacher mindset, the ability to adapt and the ability to find some of your own resources. A teacher that decides they want to do a project, maybe with Prezi, this presentation tool, but they've never used it before, can Google that and find, you know, 100 YouTube videos on how to use Prezi, and then they're started. And then the shift from entertainment to productivity. So, I think personal mobile devices have typically been used for entertainment or social interaction, and now we're in the shift of teaching people to use them for productive uses as well. My presentation is not going to open. So, you're never, ever going to hear me say that we've got these things in place, and life is great, now it's easy, we can teach our kids, they're going to learn amazing things, and all we do is put an iPad in front of them. Never, ever going to hear me say that, because however great our technology is, it's never, ever going to replace great teachers. And so, it's really by great teaching, which we have in place. We have really great people in this district. I've already met, you know, a lot of them, all of these interactions I have, I'm always impressed, and I'm always excited to work with the people here. And it's the great teaching paired with all of those technology improvements that can lead us to having a really high impact. When Gladwell talks about these changes, he talks about three factors that cause these huge changes, and they're the power of the few, a few people being able to make a huge district difference. I talked to our teachers in this district, and I said, relative to the population of Northfield, we're small. But the population of Northfield passes through our rooms and our hallways in a large, a large number. And so, it's a few of us that have the ability to take what we're doing and our mission of preparing kids for our dynamic world, and bring that to the far corners and the far reaches of our community. The stickiness factor, that it sticks, that it's engaging, that it's purposeful and meaningful. And then context, that's our environment. It's that we have the availability, we have the infrastructure with technology, but we also have the support, that people have the ability to try something, they're encouraged to try something, they are creative, and they're able to learn from their experiences. And as teachers or as school personnel are supportive and have really positive feelings about their abilities, their efficacy, and they try something, it creates this positive environment. At the same time, this positive environment encourages people to feel positive and to try some new things. So those two, the people's inner states and their actions and the environment are kind of mutually effective. So we have this all in our minds of where we're at with technology, and what does it really mean? This quote is actually from a student in Ray Kudry's statistics class when they presented here last May about their research on transformational technology. And the student said, you know, in high school, it's, they shared their perspective of high school, it's really like you're going through and you're doing all of these things, and you're wondering, when am I going to get to the real world? When am I going to use this? What's this for? When do I get to be, you know, participating? And she said, I felt like I was going to class, and I was actually participating in real life. And I thought, that's good stuff. That's really, really good stuff. If we got all of our kids to say that about something they did at school every day, we're doing a really good job. So how can we do that for our kids? Enter the SAMR model. You've all seen the SAMR model, right? It's been here. I see a couple of nods. This is the model as it's probably been presented over and over again. It's the kind of the original model of what we do with technology. And I had teachers, I asked them, what do you think of when you think of the SAMR model? And they went to this little site, show you what they said. So this is the, they all use their iPads during workshop and hold them up to that QR code, and they typed in a short answer of what they think of with SAMR. And we got things, which I knew we would get this range, and we got some people who said, what is it? Some people who were humorous.
Samurai.
Yes, there's a couple of Samurai references in there. You know, Matt Hillman made it in there twice, right about there. That's what comes to mind with SAMR. Technology, we have innovation, we have, it's challenging, creative opportunity, all sorts of things that our teachers think of when they, when they see the SAMR model. And for me, I was looking and saying, here's where we're at. We have people all around, and how can we take this and use it to benefit our kids when we start teaching? And this was a fun thing. I've probably gotten five or six emails from teachers saying, what was that site? I want to try that with my kids. And so that was another benefit, I think. Tells you that teachers are wanting to try some things too. So there it is, the SAMR model. And basically what we're doing is comparing to teaching without technology to adding in our technology. So we have our iPads and Schoology and all the tools that we can use, and we compare to what we would do without those things. And so substitution is where our technology is just a direct substitute. The same kinds of thinking happen, the same activities, kids do something digitally as opposed to on a piece of paper. It could be reading a book instead of paper book reading on their iPad. Augmentation is that next level where the tech is a substitute, but there's a functional improvement. And some examples of that would be things like typing a paper with word processing, and you have spell check, or you have a dictionary or a thesaurus, or you're reading a book and you can tap on a word and hear it pronounced, things like that. Modification, and you notice that line, when you get into transformation, they say, teaching above the line. Modification is where our technology allows for significant task redesign. Now our students are doing something that's different than they would have done before. And so, maybe in place of making a poster, kind of a collage, and demonstrating something to their class in a presentation, students would take and make a video and be able to post that to Schoology, share them, comment on each other's, share it even beyond that. Now their parents can see their presentation too. And then redefinition is where it's tasks that were previously inconceivable. And these are the things that I think break down some time and space barriers. Things like Google Hangouts, video calls. I've been lucky to have a few of them, and one of them that was pretty cool was with a Holocaust survivor. So here I am in a classroom of social studies students, we're talking to a Holocaust survivor at the Holocaust museum, and that's pretty cool stuff. So, the SAMR model is all well and good. I don't think it's necessarily the gold standard of what we do, and I think there's some challenges with it. So, the first challenge I see is that people go, redefinition, the higher the better, and they shoot for that R. And what happens is teachers can be tempted to look for cool things to do, cool tasks, and things that are going to be fun and engaging for their kids, and I think there's a great place for that. However, if we shoot for the task without really thinking about our learning objectives, it gets a little to B up there, and the foundation is not there that's really important to guide us. So, this is one of the things that I cautioned people against. And I said, you know, SAMR, that this hierarchical scheme, it makes people just strive for that. And I challenged teachers to think, does the learning activity correspond to deeper learning, increased development, and/or higher achievement for our students? If you Google SAMR and iPads, you'll find many images like this that take apps, and they categorize the apps to substitution, augmentation, modification, or redefinition. And this is something I cautioned against, because you can use your apps for lots of different things. And so, iBooks, for example, is in substitution here. In iBooks, you can read a book on your iPad, that's substitution. But you can take notes, and we don't usually let kids write in our school-provided books. But on iBook, you can. You can highlight, you can write in comments, and then you can even look at just the things that you found important when you want to go back and study or respond to some questions or things like that. But then teachers can even create iBooks. Some of our teachers are doing that, where they're deciding, here's our text for this unit, I created the book, and it can have interactive elements for our students, little check-ins for understanding, little links that take them out of the book. And then we're getting into things that we never could have done before with our text. So I caution against categorizing in this way. The question is, what's the task? What are our students doing, and why? And then here is one of my favorite graphics. When you ask yourselves, what do you want kids to do with technology? The things that we want to be thinking of are the things on the right, the things that are the thought processes that our kids are having, that they're raising awareness, they're challenging people, they're changing their minds, they're changing other people's minds, they're asking their own questions, they're finding their own answers, that they're doing something that is active. It's not about this product that they create, it's about the processes that they're going through and the ways that they are personally developing and challenging themselves, and the tech is just a tool. It's not our learning outcome, it's what gets us to learn, to the learning outcome. This comes from Bill Ferriter, who is a SolutionTree consultant, so a PLC guy, and he is, travels with the Du Forest for SolutionTree, and he also is a full-time teacher still, so pretty So then I talk about going a little deeper with SAMR. So we're not just going to look at what are our activities, what level are they at on SAMR, but really what are they having our students do beyond just cool tasks? And this is a model of the SAMR, the SAMR model that I really like, a visual that I like a bit, the swimming pool. As opposed to climbing up and looking at the top being the best, looking at starting out, getting our toes wet with our substitution and augmentation, and then getting into modification and redefinition where we're deepening the experience for our students. I like to call this swimming in a pool with lots of opportunities. The other thing that I had teachers think about is the four Cs. If we talk about 21st century learning, 21st century skills, the changes that we're experiencing, and what we need to prepare our students for, the four Cs are what come up, that these are the skills that our students need, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity. And so I ask teachers, when you're thinking about your content, what can your students do in these skill areas? And once you decide what you want them to do with those, what are the tools that can practice that as you're teaching your content? And then finally, content area spark. All of our teachers got into teaching because something, there was something they were passionate about. They didn't decide to teach, like I taught Spanish. I knew kids could use Spanish, that it could be valuable to them. And I had to think about, why is my content important? Why should my kids be here? It's not to memorize verb charts, you know? What's the purpose of teaching and learning in my content area? And what could students do if they were learning and applying their learning at high levels? And that's when I start to think about, well, they could see other parts of the world, they could interact with people that previously they didn't have the opportunity to get to know. And I think, okay, how can I bring that into my classroom? And we do have technology that allows them to do things like that in every content area. So my challenge is really taking the SAMR model, taking where we're at in education and going, what can I do today in my classroom to get just a little bit better and provide just a little bit of more real-world interaction for our students? That's what I've got about SAMR. So, Matt had asked me to present about SAMR, and I kind of gave a little bit more of the overview of what I shared with teachers. And I'm also happy to take some questions about general direction and general things that have happened at the start of the year. I will give a little overview, I guess, of just the beginning of the year, distribution of iPads and such. We did have a new system this year. If you look around, I'm sure you've been in this room a few times, and you've seen all the posters hanging on all the shelves around. We've had changes with how Apple works, changes with how mobile device management works, and the systems that were used last year just really aren't available to us anymore. And so we really did have to make some drastic changes in how we set up student devices, and I think for the better. We do, at this point, have a little bit better handle on our ability to interact with individual student devices, our ability to group students and give them the appropriate apps, the appropriate restrictions and policies and such. So, the biggest differences are that last year, people came in and got a handshake and an iPad, and were on their way. I think this year, people came in and had to read and go through steps, and we tried to make it pretty, pretty clear. And it was, you know, it's a little more difficult, but I think overall, went pretty well. We do have iPads out to all of our seventh through 12th graders, and with the exception of ALC, they'll have a slightly different format where they will get iPads one-to-one that will stay at the ALC for now. And then our sixth graders, which are going to be handed out one week from today and tomorrow.
Noel, do you have a question? Carrie?
I don't really have a question, but I thought this was just a great presentation. And I really appreciate the focus to, again, over and over again, it's not just technology for technology, it's what are you doing with it? And really, really, I just so much appreciate that very clear, firm focus on that, because I think it is easy for people to get into the tech part of it and forget that this is just another version of pen and paper, and it's not just another version. But I was going to challenge that a little bit. But, you know, what I keep telling people who say, well, why are we doing this? I say, this is the pen and paper of this century. So people have to be really comfortable with it. And I say that as someone who's not real comfortable with it. I guess I do have one question. You said that everybody has internet access?
No, I didn't say everybody. I said it's in almost every home.
Is it, you know, are there, I remember at one point, Chris, we were talking about maybe having some notes in some neighborhoods, has that happened?
And, yeah, we, obviously, we've not been able to get, that's a piece that would have to come out of the city. We do know that in the surveying that we've done, the number is-
Consistently, over the last four years, we have seen roughly 93, 94% of homes having some kind of access, and that's through multiple, it goes back to a survey that Daryl Sawyer and Kurt Mickelson did at the middle school, well before we even talked about doing anything. And when I first saw the numbers, I, it didn't make sense to me. And then since then, we have had two additional pieces. One was at the high school last year in the fall, where there was just a high school survey. And then, again, Ray's survey at the end of the year last year focuses on that 93, 94% range. And what I think is even more interesting is the fact that even with that level, that 6% is still too many kids that don't have it, you know? But what we have heard over and over from staff is that it, that, that lack of home access for most kids has not impeded their ability to complete the work that they need to get done. And so I think what Kim is saying is that kids are finding a way. However that happens, kids find a way.
Yeah, I would say kids are pretty resourceful in getting to where they can get some access. But also, I'm going to say that most of the content that a kid would need between, you know, leaving school in the afternoon and getting to school in the morning, they can have already downloaded on their iPad. So there are ways to take a YouTube video that might be a teacher giving a lesson, download it to the iPad while you're at school, and take it home and watch it. Notability will work just fine from home. Most of the things, you can make an iMovie from home. Most of the apps can function without internet.
Thank you.
But I think that's, I mean, that's an ongoing discussion, and it's something that now we have a new city manager, whatever, I think will probably come back, because we have had those discussions with the city before, and it really kind of put out the branch, or all I have branch to say is, are there ways we can collaborate together to make that happen? And I think that, you know, the city has decided on other priorities in terms of how they want to spend their money right now. But I do think that they will come back at this, because the reality is, being able to have that access everywhere they can, everywhere a kid might need the access, is an important part. I would agree with Kim, though, is that most of the kids have figured out a strategy to get there. They can get to the library, they can get to one of the multiple places in downtown that have access. They can get to a friend's house, they can get to other places where they're going to be able to get that access, and obviously, before and after school, if they're at school, they have that access from wherever they are.
I was just going to add that the community school will also have, open on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, and part of it will, we will have, accept students through 12th grade that live in that neighborhood and want to come and have homework help, and have time in that space as well.
One other, I mentioned this last year, that the federal E-Rate program, which we have, I went to the first conference in 1996, I was maybe 24, I got to go to learn how to write it. And this past year, the feds have rewritten those regulations for the, it's the first major rewrite ever, and their focus has totally been on student access to the internet. They ran a pilot program last year that we were not eligible for, we don't have a high enough free and loose lunch count, that actually provided like a Verizon hotspot for kids in certain communities be able to take home to access the web. So, we know that the feds are really intent on it in terms of the FCC who runs the E-Rate program, they have really totally changed the focus from things like your phone bill and your internet bill to making sure that internet access is available for all. And as you know, we typically, our biggest challenge hasn't been the kids within the city limits. A lot of it has been our rural families who have, do not have access sometimes to high-speed broadband. And that is probably our greatest challenge, is more the rural community than even kids in the city.
Julie, did you have a question?
Yes, well, I wanted to echo Carrie's comments. This is a really, really great presentation, and I think when I, when I look back on just the start of this whole, the technology initiative, and I think one of the greatest strengths has been everyone's very constructive and honest review and, and look at what's happening, and being able to make changes when they were necessary, and to learn from them, and I think that's really going to be key to the ongoing success. And I heard that come out in numerous ways in your presentations. So, one thing I did want to, or one thing I wanted to mention as well, when I was at the middle school parent night, one thing that I kept hearing that I hadn't heard it spot in last year was about Schoology, and really bringing that out, and then I know the middle school's doing some very focused effort on having consistent use of Schoology, and I think that's something that was learned from last year. And again, just look at that very honestly and very critically to say, you know- But wanted to let you know that I heard that over and over throughout the teachers' presentations about that. So it's good.
I did actually present on Schoology to both middle and high school staffs. And they, both of them have building wide efforts to be pretty consistent on using Schoology. And I also, I said to the teachers, I said, I am, I have a message prepared to go out through Sky Alert once we're into the, you know, maybe second week of school or so, that goes to parents that will give them some links. I just basically made some screen casts of how to get your parent account set up and what it looks like and what you could find on your parent account. And once that goes out, parents will really want to see content there. And so that, that knowledge, I think, is there, that we want families to be coming in and using Schoology to be able to interact with their students. It is a really powerful tool for parents to look, you know, even knowing that the final grades are in Skyward. And a parent looks and they think, what's, what's on Skyward, what's on Schoology? And we'll, we'll work to help parents iron that out a little bit. But if they find an assignment name in Skyward and they wonder, what did my kid do with this? And they go to Schoology and find that assignment, they can pull up all the documents that go with it. So it's such an enhancement to the information that's available to parents and, you know, a kid does not have the opportunity to say, well, you know, I lost that one, or it's not, I don't have it, or-
The dog ate my iPad.
The teacher didn't give us that handout. It's probably there. And so it's just a helpful tool for being supportive from, you know, both the home side and the school side.
Thank you.
Rob?
I was just wondering, I mean, I think the, the content creation part of it is something I'm very interested in and just how it, I mean, we've talked a lot about how it's sort of is a new tool for unleashing creativity. So it might not be something that you would see reflected in test course, but you'd see it reflected in just creative projects and different ways like that. So, but there are people who look at, you know, they want to assess things and say, what is the impact this is having? And I'm just wondering if there's a way that some of these creative projects, some of this content that's created could be shared without, you know, violating student privacy or anything? And also just between teachers, to have them sharing their successes and failures?
Sure. Yeah, that's definitely an environment that I would want to foster. I would say that I've been able to do that in previous experience, working with teachers and being able to share out a lot of what's going on through things like Twitter, through, through Schoology staff groups, where you can share some resources and some examples. And, you know, once, once teachers get going and get talking to each other, amazing things happen. So I, you know, I showed a couple of teachers some of the more advanced things that you can do on Schoology. And pretty soon, I get a couple more emails saying, hey, I heard that Schoology can do this, and would you be able to show me? And, you know, that's, that's good stuff. I've had, you know, the first, we've only had five days of school. It doesn't, you know, it feels almost a little bit longer right now, but the, you know, those first few days were just so busy with the, the nuts and bolts and making sure kids had what they needed. And I think we're pretty much there. We did have some, some stumbling a little bit with getting out our first paid app, Notability. And it, you know, it took for half of the kids right away. The other half, not so much. And we couldn't, you know, I was on support calls and we couldn't pinpoint what is happening here, but we're sure we're working at it. And, and now I think we've gotten there. So the kids have it, they have what they need. But even Thursday was when I started to get into teacher classrooms. And that's where it's just exciting. You know, I was working with Paul Ousley, I don't think he would mind me sharing at all, that he, you know, came in, everything is new. He's in Schoology for the first time, he's in a Mac for the first time, he's in an iPad for the first time. Plus, you, all your regular logins when you have a new position and just learning how everything functions. And he was just excited and, you know, to show a couple of things that you can do. And everything was, wow, and I can really use this. And, and the comment of some of the things that take up our time when we can be playing together in class, now kids can do on their, on their own. Because he has the ability to design activities that help kids press, to practice the theory and skills part of the, of music. And they can use their time in class to be playing together, which is pretty awesome.
I guess I'm, we could just follow up. Is there a way that you could either use the technology, the transformational technology blog, or have some sort of an open house for the public where you could showcase some of these things?
Yeah, yeah, I would definitely like to do that. So it will be one of my ongoing goals to keep that updated and to show a couple of things that are happening.
Okay, great.
Thanks for that.
You mentioned you too, just about Clarity a little bit.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of that when we were talking about internet, internet access. Tomorrow, Matt and I are going to participate in a webinar, and a product's called Clarity, it's called Bright Bites, actually. And it's a, it's a tool that surveys whatever community you really want to survey in your, in your school. You can survey parents and students and teachers and other staff in your schools. And you get information about how technology is being used and what kinds of things people are creating, what kinds of things they're doing, what kinds of differences they're seeing between, and how they work, access to technology. So they use a model, on the spot, so I didn't think of all their things. It's called the case model. There's classroom, access, skills, and environment are the four areas that they, they look for. And what they give you is really, really good data about what kind of experience your community is having with technology use. And really good targeted next steps of how can we, how can we get better at what we're doing and what we're providing in terms of technology in order to really get to higher levels of learning? So it's a very, very exciting tool. And you can do the survey when you talk about, how do we, how do we gauge how this is going outside of MCA scores? This is a tool that you can use in the fall and in the spring, year to year, and you can see changes in how technology is being used. And it assesses things like the four Cs. So it, those themes of, you know, collaboration are embedded throughout the surveys and questions like, you know, how often do you use social media? How often do you use social media for school? How often do your teachers assign you something that uses social media to interact with other people on a topic from class? How often do you collaborate with your classmates on, on projects? What tools do you use to collaborate on projects? And so it gives, you know, those kinds, I don't know all of the questions, but it's asking questions of that nature to really give us an idea of where we're at on communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and what are our students and teachers doing with technology?
Julie?
I just have one about, could we get a copy of your-
This presentation? Yes.
Is it pricey?
It is pricey. But yes, I can, I can definitely share that.
Okay, thank you.
I will do it before I walk out of here.
Okay.
Otherwise, I might not do it.
So people will be sharing it to, sharing it to our tribe?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's-
So I had a follow-up question. So you talked about, one of the things that's been different this year was the pushing of the apps versus how they've been handled in previous years. And I think we got a little bit from some Joel's, maybe newsletter, talked a little bit about it too. But I'm wondering, what are the things parents might expect that might be different this year that they could know in terms of engaging with their student? And then, and maybe the other pieces that we had, these groups that came and, we did focus groups with people mid-year where they gave us input. So things that they might, that might look different this year, and the ways that we were responsive, maybe would be the other piece of that.
Sure. I was, I was at one of those meetings last year as a parent. Yeah, and you know, I would imagine that we would have some of those kinds of events. I do intend to offer some parent, some parent interactions at things like conferences, at least even handouts that, that parents could even pick up if they're not getting emails or blog posts or whatever it might be, that would say, hey, here's something you can try with your, to, to manage your student's iPad, or to interact with your student regarding technology. So those are, you know, parent meetings are going to happen at, at some point. We, that's, it's such an important piece of this, you know? So there's that. What was the other part of your question?
So one was just what can they expect to see differently? And it sounds like we'd be communicating that with, through these meetings then?
Yeah, a little bit, I would say probably more frequent Sky Alert messages as well, just not constant. We don't want to overwhelm people with, you know, that's why I'm waiting on my Schoology one, let the year get a little bit underway. But then I want to say, yes, you can see what's going on in school through Schoology, and here's your parent access code. So we're working on that, how we actually get those codes out. But that's work that's happening with the middle school and high school to facilitate every kid being able to bring home a parent access code and a message going out to parents that says, hey, we're doing this in school today, ask your student, and here are some clips on how you, how you use that, once you have it. I have already had several calls, emails about Schoology and parents wanting to get on Schoology, and they are excited when they get, you know, I share the document I have that I'm going to send out. And I say, well, this is about to go out, here's a copy of it, let me know if you need anything added to it. And I, people have been very happy with being able to see how that works. So that will go out to everybody within the next week or so.
And then I know one of the things that I think we were responsive based on those groups is that sixth graders, it's a delayed start this year.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think we heard from some of the parents.
Yeah, and it's, it's a smart thing, you know, that any transition year is a, is a big year for our kids. It's not an easy thing to move from one school to the next. I was a link crew coordinator and pretty passionate about transition to high school. And I think transition, transition to middle school is also a huge jump. And when you think about all of the new responsibilities that our students are taking on and the opportunity it really gives our teachers to, to interact with their kids and really just get to know their kids a little bit better, to give them some training on what they're going to be doing with their iPad, how they use their iPad responsibly. Those are, those are good elements to have in place at whatever level our kids start to get personal iPads. I think that was a really great move by the district.
Ellen, I would say, I, you know, I ran one of these, well- And then Kim was at one of them as a parent. But I think if I were to think about the things that changed, one would be the sixth grade. The other would be what you heard in the consistency in Schoology, especially at the middle school. I, too, attended the parent night, and every single class, they talked very specifically about how they had intentionally talked about Schoology. The high school has changed how they are doing some pieces in consistent, consistency with Schoology. Some that did not come up necessarily at the parent meetings, but another piece that was a significant change is what Kim had mentioned before, about our ALC students keeping their devices for the most part at the building. It's another piece that did not go like we had hoped it would to begin with. And there's just some, some changes that were going through there that I think were responsive. Those are the things that I think were the biggest components. And I know that Mr. Lear, too, at the high school during his faculty meeting, shared that one of the things in reflecting upon last year is that they were not as aggressive as they should have been, or hindsight is 2020, of course. But would have, had not been aggressive as removing students privileges if they had been misusing, or I shouldn't say misusing, but being distracted by the device. Most of the restrictions that we get put on high school students last year were requested by parents. There were a dozen or a few more that were requests that were made by staff members. And I know that Joel had talked specifically that there were going to be some additional steps this year. We really want to keep that freedom for our high school students because we know that there's a lot of positives of it. But I think there's a lot of learning that took place in the high school last year about what do we need to do as the adults? Because we did what we said we were going to do. We probably just didn't do it enough. And part of that was trying to help empower staff of how do we request this to happen? Because that's part of it as well. So I think, if I were to think about the significant feedback we got from last year, those would be the things that I would think you would notice differently.
Great.
And the one thing we didn't mention was personal Apple ID model for our middle school students. And so that's a new thing. There are federal laws that prevent students that are under the age of 13, anybody under the age of 13, having certain accounts for online, online tools. And Apple ID falls into that category. And so Apple created new this year, a way for parents to manage Apple IDs for students who are under the age of 13. And so that's, that's a management task for us because it requires that we upload a spreadsheet to Apple that includes, you know, student, student name and date of birth and language and home email address. And not all of our students have a home email address on file. And sometimes it went to an email that wasn't the primary account that parents are using. And so I've, I've fielded several calls and emails about, we haven't received an email from Apple. And I will go and look into it and find that it went to an address that they are no longer using or whatnot. And I think, again, we're getting there. And another message to sixth grade families went out on Thursday about steps that they can take to be ready for their students to receive their iPads next Monday and Tuesday. So that's in the works. And I think, well, I, you know, I get, I can look at who has created them so far, it's just hard to sort out if some of those students are already using a family Apple ID. And so it doesn't give me a really clear picture of how many still need to create them. So we will be working with families on that one on an ongoing basis until our, our kids are all ready to go with that. And the Apple ID is required to get apps on your iPad. And so that, we can't get around. And last year, there, there was one Apple ID that kind of pushed apps out to all of the iPads, and that doesn't work anymore. So we can't do that. And we have all the licenses, we just didn't use them last year. They were carried on one, on one Apple ID. So there's no wrongdoing anywhere, but Apple says no to that now. And then we need our kids to have an Apple ID in order to receive the apps. We also have the ability to push out apps and then pull them back. And that, as far as I can tell, is working. So it's a good thing. We, you know, I emailed a couple of teachers today about apps that are more expensive and said, how would we like to manage these? We do have the ability to push them out to a group of students, we just need to know who needs them, for how long, create a group in our management system, give the app to that group, and at the end of the semester, at the end of the year, we can pull that back. And so, long term, it's a pretty good savings for us to be able to distribute and pull back apps.
Well, I really appreciate you, your presentation. And particularly, one week into school, and this has got to be the crazy busy time, so to say, oh, and by the way, can you come to the school board and present how things are going? Thank you.
And she said yes.
Yeah.
Which was even better. I, I think one of the key things, too, that you've heard from Kim's presentation, is the same kind of passion that I think you've heard from Matt and others about, again, not technology for itself, but technology for what it can do for learning. And I, I think, you know, that's the powerful message we need to keep sending to staff is, this is not about just using the technology because it's fun and cool. It's about saying, can you do something new in terms of how I learn, or how I understand, or how I collaborate, or how I, how I create my own new information in ways that I could never do with a paper and pencil? And there are a huge number of ways that I think this is going to happen. I think at the same time, as Kim has shared with you, this thing is a moving target. It's changing, you know, on a daily, weekly basis. As federal law changes, as Apple looks at, you know, what can we really do and not do? And what are their attorneys telling them, no, you got to pull back on this, do something different? But having someone like Kim who's on it all the time has no other distractions, because this is the piece that she's involved in, I think, really helps us to stay ahead of the game. And I think the other piece that's really important is that Kim is out there working with staff and working with teachers on a regular basis, saying, how can I help you? When, what, you saw something you, you really liked, can I help you work through how to make that happen for your classroom? Because I know that if we're going to change hearts and minds of staff in terms of really growing with it, when they reach out, they need to have somebody that's going to say, sure, I'll help you, I'll help you figure out how to make this work. I'll tell you what you can do and what you can't do. And, you know, I'll help you find the tools so that you can practice it. And I'll help you if you stumble to get back up and keep going. That's a really powerful piece. And it's something that takes horsepower, it takes, takes boots on the ground, not only with Kim, but also with the technology staff to make that happen on a daily basis. So I think we're really on the right track with this. And I very much appreciate all the work. And I know, coming in the, the first couple of days of school, and I said, how many emails did you get this morning? And it was like two or 300. And I'm not sure that number's getting smaller, but hopefully, the issues are changing.
Oh, it's been, it's been good. And like you say, those, the relationship piece with teachers and coming in new this year, of course, I knew a few people because I live in town, but the majority of the teachers here, I don't know, but I have met a lot. And that's, that says something for being on our fifth day of school, that even today, you know, I walked down to the art area, which I hadn't been to yet. And that's a long walk from the district office, which is kind of welcome.
You have to have a map, too.
Yeah. And that's, that says something for being on our fifth day of school, that even today, you know, I walked down to the art area, which I hadn't been to yet. And that's a long walk from the district office, which is kind of welcome.
You have to have a map too.
Yeah. I should have told you.
A map and cookie crumbs, just so you can find your way back.
But even on the way, I probably talked to six teachers on the way. And those interactions are all a positive thing that, that start a conversation that's good. And it's, I tell teachers, I might not know any answers to your questions, but I sure hope you find them. And that's, you know, that's how it goes. And I think people are ready to try some things. It's a good thing.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There are no items for individual action. So we are ready to move on to the consent grouping. Is there anyone, anything that anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? I'll remind the board members, there were some additional items added from our table talk. All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent grouping. Moved by Carrie, seconded by John. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent grouping is approved. All right. Items for information, we have, Dr. Richards is going to talk to us about the world's best workforce annual report.
Yes, Mary, why don't you step up to the podium, just, just in case, you know, we'll see how the tag team goes on this piece. I guess I just want to frame for you where we are with this particular process. And remember when we talked earlier with the celebrations and challenges, we talked about the idea that with the world's best workforce, we are required to have our first annual report on the world's best workforce due to the commissioner on October 1 of 2014. Today is September the 8th of 2014. On Friday, we got another email from the department and the, the email said, we have a template in draft form, but we're still working on editing it. We've gotten this exact same message now for at least four weeks in a row. So what we anticipate will happen is that we'll actually get some final direction from the state with potentially a week to two weeks ahead of the deadline to have it ready to go. The good thing is that we have folks like Matt and Erin and Mary and other folks who have been looking at the world's best workforce, thinking about how the things that we're already doing are going to help us be positioned to really make it happen. And so we have pretty much developed an outline for the, the process that we're going to use. And really that outline comes back to the things that you already know about. It comes back to the district strategic plan. It comes back to the D-PAC goals. It comes back to the DCSDC goals that are tied to staff development. It comes back to the individual school improvement plans from each of our, of our buildings and each of our programs. And then it also comes back to the student achievement goals and the SMART goals that are tied to the PLCs. And really cascading down from kind of that top level of thinking about the long-term vision and mission and strategies down through annual D-PAC goals, annual DCSDC goals, annual school improvement plan goals, which are often on a three-year schedule, and then PLC team goals that are really created typically twice, twice a year, once a semester, and then are shared out with you and shared out with the community through the evidence of practice documents that are done at the end of each semester. So our plan at this point is to share our structure in, in, almost in an outline format, where we'll, we will talk about how all these things come together to provide continuous improvement for our students through a strategy that focuses on the big picture, but then brings that focus down very tightly down to the building and down to the individual PLCs. And then in that outline, what Mary and Heather and others will do is embed all of the documentation around each of those pieces into links that will be tied right to that particular website. So we'll have kind of the, the page on our website that says, here's the world's best workforce plan, here's the components. If you want to find out what the school improvement plan is for Greenville Park, you click on the school improvement item, and it will take you to a litany of, here's the school improvement plans for each of the buildings. You click on the Greenville Park, you go to the Greenville Park plan, you look at it in detail. You want to look at D-PAC goals, you go to D-PAC goals, you'll click on that, you'll see the D-PAC goals for each of the years when we've had D-PAC goals. You want to look at PLCs and what's happening with PLCs, you'll go to the school improvement plan or the PLC level, you'll click in, you'll say, I'd like to find out what the English PLC is doing at the high school. I'll go in, I'll be able to go directly to that PLC and take a look at it. Now, there's some clicks involved in getting to those pieces, but what our intention is, is to have as much of it embedded into this outline as we possibly can have. And what we've done is done some looking around at what other school districts are doing. And most of them that I think are doing anything right now but going, oh my goodness, where do we go first, are following a pretty similar strategy. They are basically taking everything they know they're already doing and thinking about how do you put it into the world's best workforce format. As part of that document too, we'll also answer kind of the five components. So we'll look at, at the school readiness piece, look at the literacy by third grade, we'll look at the issues around teacher and principal assessment, we'll look at the issues around how do we reduce the achievement gap for students? We'll look at the pieces around graduation rates and look at around the career pieces that we're looking at with workforce development. And so each of those will have a component, and you'll be able to click right in and see exactly what things are going on. We don't know if that's exactly what the state is going to give us to work on, and we will work with whatever they give us to try to create the piece that eventually needs to be presented to the commissioner. Our intention at the next board meeting will be to get this thing up. It won't be live out to the community yet, but it'll be internally live so that Mary will be able to take you through the, the entire WBWF document and show you how you can click in and look at all the different pieces. We think this is, this is what makes sense. We think if, if we can take the commissioner at her word, she's trying to say to us, we don't want you to have to create new stuff, that you need to just think about a way to put these pieces together. And we think, you know, the, the good thing is we have so much solid work that we've already done to get us there. If there's a snag to this at this point, it's just the fear of the unknown of not knowing exactly what they're going to create. And also to some extent, I probably shouldn't use the word misguided, should I, that probably will get me in trouble. I would say a parochial perspective that you actually create SMART goals at the district level. In other words, that you create goals about what percentage growth you're going to get in reading at the district level and have that make any sense or make it stick. You know, I think our sense all along has been, you keep the D-PAC goals and you keep the district strategic plan at that 30,000-foot level. You bring the work down to the individual building level where the building says, we're really struggling with reading right now, or we're really struggling with math, or, or we're really struggling with how do we support students or English language learners. And they create SMART goals that work with that. And those SMART goals then drive the individual PLCs in terms of the work they do. And that's where you make change. You make change from the bottom up, not from the top down. And for whatever reason, there's still some flavor of this thing. And I'm not sure if it's the department or if it's the legislature, I'm thinking that somehow you can drive all this from the district level. And, you know, we're, we're a very small district, 4,000 kids. Think about how you would do that in Minneapolis or Anoka, Hennepin or St. Paul. It's ludicrous. You, you can't do that kind of work at that level and have it make sense. And you need to keep the, the, the elements that you create at that level very broad so that they give people permission to do the things we want to do and the overall direction in terms of, of the things that we want to see happen for kids. So that's really where we kind of are at this point. What we're sharing with you is, we will be back on the 25th. We will have a document that will be ready to go live as soon as you give it a blessing, and we will get it put up. And we will also do whatever the state requires us to do. Understand that the state has been telling us all along that they want us to create a one-page summary document. And that they're going to create, across the state, they're going to create 500 or 600 of these one-page documents. And that somehow they're going to review those and decide who's doing okay and who There seems to be a loss of touch with reality there somewhere. But we're going, we're going to do the things that we know need to be done. And again, we've got a really good, solid group that's going to work for this. We're going to be talking about this tomorrow in cabinet because we want to make sure we got all of our principals on board in terms of the things that we're talking about doing here. But that's really the frame that we're trying to do. And we just wanted to let you know, you know, you didn't see any documents today because we're just not there. We will have a document to, to put in front of you for the board meeting next time, and we'll show you how it would look to a community member who wanted to come in and look at what was going on. But I also, the caution is simply, there are some pieces to this that if it goes to the irrational endpoint, actually creates negative, a negative piece, not a positive piece, because you get into saying that somehow at the district level, I can create two goals that we're all going to work on. And I'm going to make sure it all, all happens. And if I happen to be the industrial tech teacher or the fax teacher or the foreign language teacher or whatever, and it's not a reading or math goal, I don't know what's going to happen there. Right now with the, with the program we have, we're able to get those PLC goals to work with every single group we have. To me, it makes really good sense, and that's kind of the direction we're going to take. So now Mary's going to answer any questions you might have about this.
Well, actually, we're not too concerned about what the state puts out because we have gathered all the information. Well, we aren't. We just have to fill in their blanks when they send it to us because we do have all the information. And we haven't had to create anything. We've already got all of the PLC processes embedded, the D-PAC, the DCSDC, we've got that. So it's just a matter of reporting it out.
The other piece too, that I think is going to be important is, you know, part of this, although it's not called out as well as we understood it should have been, is the engagement piece. And we are going to be sharing data about the engagement surveys that we did with each of our buildings, making sure that information is out there. And as we go forward, just as we're going to do with the work that we're doing with our facility study, we're going to be looking at how do we go out and talk to folks about these pieces? You know, is this giving you the information you need? Does this help you to know what you need to have? Because I think the reality is, if I'm a parent, my focus is on where my kids are at school. I want to know what is my building doing? How, how is my building meeting the needs of kids? What goals do they have? How, how well are they doing at meeting those particular goals? They probably don't care a whole lot right now about what's happening in other buildings. I think that's our job, is to, to think about the bigger picture in terms of, of how all the buildings function together, how the district functions together. But I, I believe that if, if we're going to help parents really engage with this, we engage them at the level where they really can have engagement, which is where their kids go to school. All right, I'll shut up now. And again, Mary will answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, well, this was a commercial then for the September 25th.
So that's what I, so September 22nd, what we'll be doing.
Yeah, not 25th, 22nd.
If I'm understanding correctly, is typically we have this printed document that we get in our united information and board members have opportunity to review it, and then we end up approving it the next meeting. We're not going to, what you're telling us is unfortunately MDE doesn't have their act together. So September 22nd, if you're going to walk us through what we hope is going to be what's going to be turned in October 1st, assuming we get something from them by then.
Right. And we do have, you know, the working copy.
Right.
So we'll, we'll share the working copy, that's a paper version. We'll actually show you the, up on the screen, what it would, would look like if somebody came in and wanted to, to go through it. So that they could go in, you would go in and can click on the pieces, you can see what comes up as we do the parts. So, but it, it will be different because unlike, unlike previous years where we had a per report where we could hand you a document and say, here it is with the pieces, that really is gone. And world's best workforce is really supposed to replace it, and really every other report that we do.
Right.
Which is also interesting because nobody has taken away the literacy by third grade report yet, or some of the other pieces. But we're going to look at how can we try to put all those pieces into this document so we can look at all of them at once.
Okay. All righty, well, something to look forward to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Future meetings, as we just talked about, we'll have a meeting on the September 22nd and then range October, October 13th. So with that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Noel, seconded by Julie. All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.